Good evening, everyone, and I want to welcome everyone to our December 3rd Parent and Community Advisory Council Meeting. Welcome to December. We're almost finished with this new year, well, this new year, and as we moving into the next year. And so at this time, Ms. Lawrence, can you take the roll call?
Sure. Will Bronson?
Present.
Gracia Heretta? Gracia Heretta? Kamika Harris?
Present.
Christopher Smith? Christopher Smith? Akeem Bra, I'm here. Teresa Smith?
Present.
Dolores Millhouse?
Present.
Yosaida Rojas Hinton?
Present.
Candace Perkins?
Present.
Lolita Walker?
She's a liaison, so we don't need to go.
Okay. Uh, Robin Walsh? Robin Walsh? Dr. Sheila Jackson? Dr. Jackson? Trevon Suki?
Dr. Jackson just arrived.
Oh, okay. Dr. Jackson? Okay. I'll call her again. Um, thank you. Trevon Suki? Carletta Lundby?
Present.
James Williams?
Present.
And Dr. Evelina Huggins? Dr. Evelina Huggins? I'm still counting eleven, um, present.
Okay. And then we get Dr. Jackson. Dr. Jackson's here.
Hi, present.
Yes. Hello.
So, thank you, everyone. Um, and now that we have a quorum, we'll move forward with the adoption of the agenda. Um, adoption of the December 3rd, 2025, um, meeting agenda. Do we have anyone opposing to that? Hearing none, we will-
I'm sorry, Chair Mihals. I would just ask that my name be corrected, um, with the agenda.
Okay.
So I would adopt with the amendment.
Okay. Thank you. So, um, Ms. Lawrence? Can we update District 9 to say Candace Perkins?
Yes.
And so we will move forward with the adoption of the agenda with the correction showing that the District 9 representative name is being corrected to Candace Perkins. And so at this time, do we have any objection? With amended changes? Hearing none, we will move forward with the agenda with the correction of Candace Perkins' name being updated. We'll move forward with approval of the minutes from the November 5th, 2025, um, meeting. Are there any objections to the November 5th meeting minutes? Hearing none, we will move forward with approval of the meeting minutes for November 5th, 2025. Now moving into the report of the committee chair, um, I want to take this time to welcome, um, board member for District 4, Amy Olivo. Um, welcome, if you want to come on for a second to greet, greet the council.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks so much. Um, Dolores, I'm just glad to be here and to listen in and, um, participate in any way that makes sense to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Um, and is our liaison for the superintendent, Ms. Douglas, is she on? Dr. Jackson, do you know if she's been invited?
I don't see her. She let me know at, after the last meeting that she would be joining us, but I have not heard from her today. We've, I've been all over the place, so I haven't heard from her.
Okay. And so, um, I just wanted everyone to make sure that we were aware that we do have, um, a superintendent liaison who will be also supporting Ms. Walker, um, or Board Member Walker. Um, but just briefly, I want to send this over to Vice Chair. I was not able to make the, um, community schools meeting, and Vice Chair Smith was able to attend the meeting, and I'm not sure if you have like a quick update from that meeting.
Oh, my goodness. Um, yeah, I did attend that meeting, and I, man, I want to request if we could circle back to this item so I could pull up my notes. We had a, um, a document that we needed to respond back to that I did give feedback on, but I need to pull it up.
Okay. And I'm also, we are presenting to the community school, um, on the 15th of December at 9:15 a.m. to 10 a.m. It is a virtual presentation that we'll give just about who PCAC is and what we have to offer, the community school, um, um, group, and the support that we can lend them from an advisory perspective. And so I will share with you all the presentation that we've used time and time again, and I will also be sending out just a, um, a brief form that you all can just kind of give some, a brief bio of yourself, so that they know who we have at the table and the expertise that we'll be lending, um, whenever they may need some advisory support and services. And, um, at this time, that is the end of my report for the chair because the other exciting, engaging components that I want us to talk about is our meeting that we had on Monday with the, um, Board of Education and the superintendent. But I did want to add something in my report because, Dr. Jackson, you sent everyone on PCAC an invitation to the Budget Advisory, um, Committee for the Superintendent.
Yes.
So during my time, if you can just speak briefly about that, that invitation and how you need everyone to respond, whether yea or nay to it, so you all can get a count.
Definitely. So right now, um, I would like to definitely invite everyone to please join those meetings. Uh, Dr. Joseph is trying during this budget season to get as much input as, and get in front of as many people as he can. Uh, and in my report, is going to talk more about some of the other things, to which you all will be invited as well. But the Budget Advisory Committee is something that's new. We haven't had a superintendent since my tenure do this before. He wants to have ongoing conversations with members of the community, so he's inviting, uh, PCAC. Uh, thanks to, uh, my friend Hope. I know, look, I'm calling you Hope over there. Our Vice Chair. Uh, we'll be inviting, uh, CCAC, uh, and members of the, um, I, I think it's called Disabilities Task Force, uh, but I got all that information today. And so we wanted to make sure that this group, uh, that will be made up of PCAC members, uh, Board Chair, uh, Jackson, of course, Mrs. Walker, um, other members of the bargaining community, uh, faith-based community, ju- just so he can have a diverse group of individuals to talk with about what's happening, why we're in the state that we're in, and what are some additional strategies that maybe this group can help him come up with that can address this budget shortfalls that we're having. I'll just share with you all, I just, uh, lost, uh, sixty thousand, over sixty thousand dollars of my budget for this year, and it's not a big budget anyway. Um, so I, I just smile and tell people, "Don't look for food when you come to my meetings," you know, uh, other things that we just really have to tighten our belts on, uh, and that's sixty thousand for this, the rest of this year. Next year, uh, we'll have to probably not only have that sixty thousand from this year's budget, but maybe additional money tacked on, uh, because we are just at a real fiscal cliff, uh, as a state, as a district, and we know what's happening nationally. Um, so, um, just stay posted, stay prayed up, because, uh, we're, we're in for a tough ride right now, but I will say that Dr. Joseph is committed to not impacting classroom, you know, teachers and students. Uh, he wants to make sure that the classroom is fully funded in every school. And so we're, you know, looking into that, making sure we're getting all the help we can with that. But that's what the Financial Committee, Budget Advisory Committee, will be doing. It'll be having conversations about where are the falls, where, where, you know, well, how did we get here? But then what are some ideas for how we can get out? And we know, uh, you all are right in the forefront of understanding the national scene and what's happening around the country and what's happening around the state, but, um, he's just looking forward to engaging with you all uh, around this really critical issue. You're right, he has said he's not cutting staff, and those of us who are on staff are sitting there going, "I don't know how we make it if we don't." Uh, we tried to cut a hundred and fifty million dollars from this year's budget, um, and we are about fifty million dollars short without touching people, uh, salaries, and so, um, and that's just trying to get through this year. But those, those committee meetings will be a great opportunity to have input, um, and you share your wisdom about, you know, how we can move forward, uh, and maintain the integrity of classrooms. Guess that's our job. Making sure that children don't feel the brunt of what is happening right now with loss of services, loss of instructional materials, um, and loss of staff, loss of teachers. We don't want that to happen. So, please respond. Yes, the, the first meeting is, uh, December 11th, and it will be a series of opportunities because things are changing rapidly. Uh, he's developing his budget proposal for next year in the middle of trying to balance the one that we have right now. Uh, so it'll be really, uh, uh, what do you call it, dynamic conversation that, um, that we have to get through this together.
And it's, it's virtual. That first one is virtual.
No, no, I think they're all in person except January 21st.
Okay.
Yeah. And Dr. Jackson, do you want us to just reply to you to let you know? I didn't see a way to reply. I might have missed it.
It's a link there.
Oh, there is only-
There's a link in the letter. Yeah.
Oh, in the letter. Gotcha.
And I want to also add, because, um, I saw on the email that part of this Budget Advisory Committee, the, um, County Executive, Ayesha Braveboy, was also invited, and Ed Burrows, who was the council chair, um, but is the District 8 representative, so there will be representation from the council and the county executive that have been-
That's what he asked for. He asked me to invite them, the, those two leaders. Yeah.
Okay. And so, um, the only comment that I would like to make, that's one of those dates, I think it's the February date, falls in line with the PCAC meeting.
Thank you for letting me know that. I will go right back to him because I, I can easily change that. I think that came from a date that he's available in February.
Well, I, what we can do as a PCAC is, is we can, you know, vote to have our meeting, you know, we can be in attendance on that day if he cannot move it, because if the role is advisement, um, then that's an opportunity for us to be, for those of us who can come to that, um, February 3rd meeting. So I'm, I'm not saying to move you all scheduled around. I just wanted to make sure that you are aware, so if we need to then make an adjustment, that we as a council can do so, um, because that's what we're here to do, and correct council. Yeah.
I truly appreciate you all and your flexibility, but I'm pretty sure he will not want to schedule anything on your regularly scheduled night, so I, I'll go back and talk with him and his secretary in the morning, um, to just let him know, "Hey, you know, we, we bump, we're bumping heads," and she did, she, I'm sure she was looking for dates that, of course, that were available for him, however, um, this meeting needs to happen. Um, and I'll just share honestly, transparently, I thought that, uh, you know, again, this is an open meeting, and I don't want anything to happen to this opportunity.
And I, I'm just going to add lip to that again to say, um, and someone jump in if I am speaking in a way that doesn't align with the whole council. Um, and since we just had our first meeting Monday with the board and the superintendent, um, it's not as if we've had a lot to kind of, you know, sink our teeth into. And so if need be, you know, the date is open because we already have it on our calendars to meet anyway. And so it's probably better to kind of stick with that date, so we then don't have to shuffle more dates on our February calendar and, you know, um, and so, you know, yeah.
I second that, um, Chair Mihals.
Yeah, so, uh, please.
Okay.
Any, any discussion on it? Anybody want to add lip to that? No? Um, but I, I do, I have a remiss to say, Ms. Woodridge, I want to say welcome. Um, um, Ms. Burton is no longer supporting us as the lead, and we have Ms. Woodridge, who you all have met at the, uh, retreat, and for those who were able to come on Monday. And so I want to say welcome. I want to give you a few words to say hello. We are glad that you are here, um, and we're excited for what will happen the rest of this year with you.
I'm excited too. Thank you so much.
Thank you. She gets me all giddy all the time, so I, I do appreciate it. Um, so we will move on. That is, I want to close out my, Ms. Smith, you have your hand up. You ready? I can circle back to you.
You can circle back. Thank you. So I did attend the community schools meeting, and what was requested of the team was to provide feedback on, by November 18th, on their strategic plan. Um, I reviewed that document, and the, the three areas that, um, I thought that they needed key feedback on was dealing with partnerships, stability and oversight, culturally and logistically responsive engagement, and what was the other one? Staff continuity and buy-in. So we just had a Google form that we needed to put input or information on, or the information. Um, and I provided the feedback, so I guess once we meet again, we'll go over that document and the feedback from all of the stakeholders and be able to report out, um, how they plan to move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. And, and once they provide that document, we will definitely share it out, um, with the group as a whole. There were a lot of other feedback that was provided, um, from the other community school, um, advisory participants. And so, um, thank you, Ms., um, Vice Chair Smith. And so at this time, we're going to move, um, forward and close out, um, my section for, or readout. Is Board Member Walker, is she, is she on? She in?
No, she, she didn't, um, come on yet.
Okay. And so what I would like to do is I want to pass the baton to the, um, reporter of the superintendent designees. And so I, you know, I was generous, and I gave you seven minutes today, but that's going to include Q and A. So do your best, Dr. Jackson.
All right. Um, I, I, I shared my slideshow, and I'm going to share it again because I'm going to click through it very quickly, because again, y'all, I don't read slides, but I want you to have information. So let me see if I can open this, and we will get right into it. Um, so I just wanted to, again, just thank everyone for all that you do. Um, I enjoyed so much being with you all, um, the other night at, um, the meeting on Monday, and I'm sorry, of course, it's not clicking. Uh, Ms. Woodridge, is it working for you? I do not want technology stuff to take up our time, so let me see if I can keep it moving. Okay. So I'll tell you what I'll do. I'll talk through it because you all have it already. Uh, one of the things that's just really important for me to touch on for us tonight, uh, while we're together, are the things that we were talking about. We call it the fiscal, uh, plan that Dr. Joseph is putting forward, and it's a very robust, um, opportunity for us to make sure that we, we're engaging everyone in the community. He's calling it dollars and decisions. So he really wants, uh, as many, uh, voices as possible in this process with him, um, at, while we're working to, to get to the other side and, and have a budget that's viable. And the Dollar and Cents Program really started with the Teletown Halls that we had in November. We had one on November 18th for all staff for Prince George's County Public Schools, and then the one on November 19th was for parents and community, and I know I saw some of you. I was, I was actually in the room of fielding questions and trying to put them in the queue to be answered. So I hope that many of you were able to tune in, to hear the discussion, and maybe even get into the room to speak as well. Uh, it's just a great opportunity to, you know, get our voices heard. So we started with those, and now it's December, and we're, we're jumping right into, um, the meeting with, uh, focal groups. He's meeting, uh, he met yesterday with, uh, union leads with, so the Teachers Union, the Supervisory Union, the, um, uh, CE, CE, CEIU, uh, everyone, um, who had, who's part of a bargaining unit to talk with them about the budget, the changes, and how that will impact them, uh, and get their input. And so he will be meeting with them again on December 9th, and maybe even one more time, because they did definitely want to have, uh, some input into some of the strategies he's making, putting forward, going forward. Uh, then our meeting started on December 11th, our Budget Advisory Meeting, and everyone got that letter. Um, and so, uh, the one that's virtual is going to be January 21st. The others will be held in the Boardroom Auditorium, because there are about, oh, about twenty-five people that have been invited, and if they all come, we need that kind of space to be able to have conversation. Uh, I would like to have tables in the well, so that we can actually do work while we're there together. Um, so those are coming. You've all been invited to those, and then you will get a, uh, an invitation to the next thing I'm going to talk about, which will be my last thing, because I need to give, uh, Robin Welsh some time, but we're going to have a breakfast chat and chew, and that crowd will be exactly like the crowd we had on Legislative Day, uh, and it will be back at Crossland High School's Culinary Arts Dining Room, uh, from nine till 11 on December 17th. Um, and that will be a level, uh, an opportunity for even more voices to weigh in on, uh, and at that time, he should have more of his plan laid out that, uh, people can react to and give him feedback on. So I just wanted to, that's, that's kind of like, uh, monopolizing my days right now. Uh, but we also have family institute sessions that are still going on. They have two more in the month of December. Uh, the one on December, uh, 9th in the evening is going to be, uh, about, uh, engaging with Hazel Health, uh, talking about mind and body and supporting children, uh, with all of their needs, uh, through Hazel Health. That is our opportunity to, as families, to reach out to them by phone, to have consultation, to get coaching or, or, or support for our students. And then the 16th will be Restorative Practices by Dr. Robin, uh, Welsh. No, Robin, that's not you. I'm sorry. Robin, uh, help me, guys. I'm, I'm going too fast. I'm trying to get all the names in, but, uh, mm, I, I'm, Robin McNair does the Restorative Practices, and it's a wonderful workshop to give parents strategies to think about how do we help our children become the best people that they can be. Uh, and so, you know, when a child makes a mistake, it's a learning opportunity. How do we as adults help that child recover and move forward? So that's, uh, in a nutshell, but you have my entire, uh, slideshow. I do reiterate, uh, just some of the things that our team does, but if you ever need to know anything about us or what we do, please don't hesitate to reach out. I do want to answer a couple of questions you all asked last time. Uh, we are having a very good conversation with communications to make sure that communications that go out to parents are, are done in ways that are meaningful. They're translated if they're needed, uh, and they come in more than one way. So, uh, we're, we've asked schools to put, uh, flyers on their websites, and I'm, I learned last month, and I share with everybody that a lot of schools aren't doing that. Uh, we do have a robust site for parents on the school system website, but we want to be able to advertise widely and make sure that as many parents as possible can learn and can hear, uh, about, you know, things that are happening in the school system. Um, so we, you know, we utilize YouTube. We have a YouTube page. Uh, we send out messages all the time, but that's why I was hoping, uh, Mr., um, Douglas would be here tonight, because she can give a more in-depth overview of what the communication strategies are. Um, and so, uh, again, I'm here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Um, I do have a quick, well, I want to give it to Ms. Perkins first.
Thank you, Chair Mihals. I'll be really quick. Thank you so much, Dr. Jackson, for all you do. Thank you for the updates. Um, I was just going to ask, last month, we asked for, um, the comms, and that, this is probably outside of your realm, um, the communications team to do like a screen share recording of, um, the parent site and also how to get to, uh, what used to be Board Docs. Do you know a status update, uh, for that request to shut?
I did make that request to, um, Ms. Douglas, and I haven't had, I haven't had any training on it, but we do have someone that could, I think it will be Siobhan McConnell, um, and apparently she wasn't able to get her for tonight. If it's okay, I will ask to see if she could do it for the, the next meeting in January, because I think that is a really great ask. And to be able to go through it real time together would be really significant.
Right. And I think the, the main ask was for it to be, um, available for outside of us, right? So for it to be posted on the parent tab of the PTCPS site. Um, but definitely it will be helpful for us to do a run-through, but I think it would be most helpful if we could also make sure that as we're pushing, um, the schools to utilize the comms tools, that the resources are just in that one spot. Thank you so much.
Okay. Dr. Jackson, thank you. Um, did you have any information? I didn't see it in the presentation about the community meetings that are usually held for the budget?
I don't have that yet, uh, but they will be. They will be held. I don't know if, if Ms. Welsh has them. I do not have them on my calendar yet. I know that they're planned out. What's happening? Because we had to stop everything and make the huge cuts to this year's budget, some of those dates have been pushed back. So I will reach out, um, to, uh, his Chief of Staff, uh, Dr. Collins, and see if I can get an update, and then I'll send that to you all, to, uh, uh, your Secretary, Ms. Woodland, and make sure that everybody gets it.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. And the other question, the breakfast chat and chew, is, is that an invite only, or is that a public? Um, is that open to all stakeholders in PTCPS?
It's invite only simply because we have not much of a budget, and we don't want people to come and just drink water. Uh, I do have partners that are helping. Uh, I do have partners that are helping me get some refreshments. Uh, right now, the, the guest list, the people we're inviting is close to a hundred and fifty. And so that's, that's as much as, you know, we could cover. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any other hands up? Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, um, Dr. Jackson, as always, and, um, Ms. Welsh, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I just have a very short, um, presentation. I went to let you know in the, in the world of policies. Um, the Board of Ed did a vote on two policies this past, uh, the, um, December first meeting. One was the policy on community schools. And the other one was a policy on the telehealth services that will be provided to, um, that is available for students. Is expanded to middle school and high school. Um, and is, um, something that the, the policy itself stresses the importance of equity to ensure that all students in both middles and high schools. Have the opportunity to access telehealth as the parents, um, services that the parents want to, um, pursue those. And the telehealth services are actually what we will be providing through a contract that we have with the company. So, um, and as a matter of just scheduling the appointment if the parent wants to take advantage of that. So the administrative procedure is in the process of being finalized. So, um, that it hopefully by the beginning of January, everything should be out and available. But I think they've already moved forward, um, in terms of actually, um, providing the services. So, but I did want to make you aware of that. And then the only other thing I have to share is the fact that the, um, Policy and Governance Committee, um, met, um, in November and they actually had, um, three policies that were going out for public comment. Um, the one was, um, Title Nine, um, and that is the, uh, that was revised to include the twenty twenty-four amendments to the U.S. Department of Education regulations. And the next one is Policy Eight One Zero Three, which is participation in meetings electronically. And that particular one, uh, the Eight One Zero Three does provide the board, the board members, the opportunity if they're having a dire situation where they absolutely cannot make, make it there in person, they are able to, um, uh, uh, call in and be in, in the meeting virtually. Uh, however, there still needs to be a quorum of, of board members at the meeting in person. So that they can, uh, run the meeting, um, in person at the, you know, instead of just, um, everyone's out there virtual. Because they don't, they want to have in-person meetings. So that is just gives an option for when there is a situation where you absolutely can't make it to the meeting in person. And then the second one had to do with the evalu- evaluating the superintendent of schools, which is now currently out for a public comment. And probably the biggest change to that policy is the fact that the, um, the, um, the, in the po- Policy Eighty One Hundred, which has to do with different types of meetings, though they have now added the ad hoc committee. Uh, one to evaluate the, the board member, the board, the Board of Education, and then one to evaluate the, um, the superintendent. And I just, I saw your face, uh, Ms. Milhouse. And I want to say, you're probably thinking, well, how does the board evaluate itself? Well, it's supposed to be establishing goals each year. Of what its, its goals are for performance and what they want to do. And then the evaluation should be based around, um, their completion or, uh, you know, completion, I guess, of those particular goals. So that would be how that's evaluated. So, um, those are the, um, those are the only ones that are currently out for public comment.
Just wanted to be clear, Ms. Welsh. So that's, uh, the Title Nine that are out for public comment. The Title Nine Policy Eighty One Oh Three and Evaluating the Superintendent of Schools. Those are the.
And that, and that's Eight Two Six Five.
Eight Two Six Five, right. Thank you. And what is the Title Nine? What, what policy number?
That number is, uh, Zero One Zero Four.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Perkins.
Thanks, Ms. Welsh, for, um, giving us the update. I did have a quick question in reference to, um, and correct me if I'm saying this wrong, the Board of Ed evaluation, um, being complete. Is that completed by the Board of Education members? Or is there a third party doing their evaluation? I just want to make sure I understand it.
So the, um, that's a good question. They, I do not know that, I, I know for a fact that the ad hoc committee on the valuation of the board. Of it has not met yet or because the policy has just moved forward the other policy. So I would assume that in that process of developing the evaluation tool and how they're going to evaluate that, that would be where they would make that type of decision. Um, so it's not laid out in the policy about the ad hoc committees because the purpose of that policy is merely about, um, it, uh, you know, the committees, the different types of committees. So I would think there'll be more to come once they develop their ad hoc committee and move forward and, and, uh, develop in the evaluation. But again, uh, so just when you're talking about public comment, there's, you always have that opportunity to provide, you know, feedback to the board. For, as they're moving forward, um, in this process to give them, you know, their, your thoughts and, and advisory opinions on how you think maybe they should go about evaluating themselves.
And, and do you know the makeup of the ad hoc committee by any chance?
No, it, it, I do not at this point.
All right. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Um, are there any other questions, hands? Um, I saw, for clarity, Eighty Two Sixty Five is evaluating the superintendent of schools. For the ad hoc committee, is that a new policy that is being introduced and developed? Or is this ad hoc committee going to be a part of Eighty Two Sixty Five? Uh, I'm, I'm gonna say that it's separate.
So, eh, the ad hoc committees are sitting under the policy called, eh, uh, the, uh, Policy Eighty One Hundred, which has to do with standing committees, um, as standing committees, advisory, uh, councils and ad hoc committees. So it's, it describes all the different types of committees that the Board of Ed would have. Like they have their, like, like, for example, policy, uh, and, um, governance is a standing committee. And then P C A C is an advisory committee. And now the ad hoc committees will be the evaluation committees. So, um, uh, that, so that's where you read about. But the reason I brought it up about the ad hoc committee is being so that the policies, um, are coordinated. It is mentioned though in Eight Two Six Five because we now have an ad hoc, uh, evaluation committee for the superintendent. So that's why I brought it up because it is mentioned in the, in that policy, Eighty Two Six Five. So it's sort of cross-referenced into two, two policies, Eighty One Hundred and Eighty Two Six Five.
And I have one more question in reference to the public comments. On the website, it says that the deadline is Friday, November twenty-eighth at five o'clock. Am I looking at the wrong place? Because it's Policy Eighty Two Sixty Five, evaluating the superintendent of schools.
You know what? I need to talk to, um, probably to Cindy Adeline to find out about that because that might be, um.
Oh, Cindy raised her hand.
Is she there? Oh, Cindy, hi.
Can you give us clarification on the date for that, for the, um, the, um, public comment?
Right. So it was technically closed on the twenty-eighth, but it's still, it still should be open. So let me know if you cannot access it because we typically have it open for two weeks.
It is open, but I guess, I guess the request would be for the date to be updated. But I'll just, I'll mention that it's a two-week extension on public comment responses.
Yes, we'll work on that for you. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Chair Smith.
I had, I think I have a policy question, um, specifically to Eighty Two Six Five. Um, I wanted to know, and I, I don't know if it's a format-related question or not, but if, if we have suggestions on the performance indicators that the superintendent should be evaluated on. Is that information that we could add as comment in, for the policy itself? Is that typical information is, that's captured?
I, I mean, I think you can comment on any aspect of the evaluation of the superintendent. So if you think there are specific things, then you should be adding that as a comment.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Are there any other, um, questions, comments? Ms. Welsh, as always, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, uh, thank you, Ms. Welsh and Dr. Jackson, um, for your presentations. Um, we're going to now move, um, into, uh, the discussion that we had on Monday. Was it Monday? Monday. With, um, the board, um, and the superintendent, as it states in Policy Fifteen Hundred. Um, one of the requirements is to meet with the board and superintendent jointly at the beginning of the school year to discuss the goals. Um, for the school year and how we could support and advising. And then it also suggests that we, um, have a, at least at a minimum quarterly meetings with, um, with them. And so, um, we met yesterday and so I want to open the floor so we can kind of discuss, um, what we, um, heard individually. And then how do we move forward as a collective? And what I want to do is I want to start with, um, just a few things that I jotted down as a takeaway. Especially from a policy standpoint, there was discussion, um, about the review, um, of Forty Two Seventeen. Um, as we had discussed in our previous meeting, that's also, um, a part of our report that we had sent forward, uh, some time ago. Um, as well as, um, when Superintendent, interim Superintendent Joseph mentioned, um, Policy Thirty Four Fifteen as well. Which is the school-based management, um, policy. And so, um, those are definitely opportunities for us to walk away with in reviewing those policies. Um, providing some feedback. He did mention, um, for those of you who don't know what we did in the previous years. Is what we met with the superintendent monthly, the leadership met with the superintendent, um, and the, um, associate superintendents or chiefs or, um, other heads of departments would come and meet with us on various topics such as communications. Um, we met with, um, transportation, the climate and culture. Why can I never get that group's name together? Um, I know Ms. Rashida, what's the group, um, named, Dr. Jackson? What, that does the climate and culture survey? It's okay.
I'm just as bad. I, I, I am just as bad. I know that they work for Dr. Doug Strater, who's in accountability.
But I think it's strategic planning, uh, the strategic planning department out of his, uh, um.
Strategic planning.
Under Dr., yeah, I think that's what it is. And I, I struggle. Yeah, under Dr. Strater, but I always want to call them accountability, but they're not. It's strategic planning.
Strategic planning. Um, we, we've met with, um, the blueprint team. So we, we've met with almost all of the departments in some way, shape or form. Um, but coming out of that meeting, what I heard was, um, the board asking how, um, do we support advising them? And, um, improving how they connect with the community, um, providing opportunities where parents, um, are able to share their concerns and receive updates. Um, they mentioned, Mr., actually Superintendent, interim Superintendent Joseph mentioned the, um, budget committee that Baltimore City School has and having something robust, robust as what he's doing now. And having a budget advisory component to really move forward the discussion around the dollars and decisions. But, um, wanting to have that meaningful communication. Um, I also, um, got from some things that you all stated were equity, um, enforcement, um, parent engagement and adherence to Policy Fifteen Hundred, um, the initiatives associated with blueprint. And how are we making sure that our, um, budgeting is aligned with that and, um, equal partnership? So those were some of the high-level things that I had written down and I heard in the meeting. So I want to open the floor up so we can have, um, um, a round robin discussion and to kind of talk about where do we want to go? As it relates to supporting them because, um, the two takeaways that I really had that stood out were Policy Thirty Four Fifteen. And, um, Policy, uh, Forty Two Seventeen. So I want to open the floor. Don't raise your hand all at once.
Chair Milhouse, when you say your two takeaways, and I wasn't there, um, were, uh, Policy Forty Two Seventeen and Thirty Four Fifteen? And you said, like, reviewing those policies, like, what, what in relation to those policies?
Well, what, what was stated was how we can improve those policies. Um, and I think Thirty Four Fifteen has not been touched since the, the nineteen ninety or something like that, right? And so, um, interim, um, Superintendent Joseph mentioned, how do we really improve these policies to strengthen, um, the parent and community engagement piece? But the Thirty Four Fifteen, um, really is a requirement for that, um, more robust conversation, especially around the budgeting. And those policies, um, need to be addressed so we can make sure that, uh, I guess we don't really have to have a whole bunch of ad hoc and advisory committees because on the school-based level, those discussions are being had where you're not only bringing in the parent's voice, but you're bringing in the community's voice. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Vice Chair Smith.
Um, so one of the, I, I don't know if I want to call it a takeaway, but one of the things that was mentioned in the discussion, um, as it relates to P C A C meeting with the superintendent. Um, it seemed like there will be a shift this time around, whereas we will be meeting with the chiefs. Which I think is a, a, a great idea. However, the only thing that I think that, that should be important because it's identified in the policy is that we at least have a touch point with the superintendent as well. So that would be my only, um, I guess, feedback in relation to that.
Okay. If I can clarify. He will be leading those meetings, but he will invite chiefs in case there are things on the agenda that, you know, that would be important for P C A C. But it really would be his meeting with you. Because that, he's, he's committed to doing it monthly, which I was just really impressed with. So, but he wants to make sure you can get your questions answered by the people who can do a better job, the best job at it.
Okay. Mr. Williams?
Uh, it was going to add that, that, that clarity that Dr. Jackson's clerk, uh, shared. Because that's how I interpreted what he had shared was, was that, is that he would have those folks come, um, in, into the space. Um, wanting to, to add, um, not to put, uh, board member Olivo on the space, but, you know, it was board member, is it, uh, Boozer Struthers? Who shared around Policy Thirty Four Fifteen and, and I really took that as how it had kind of been a, um, a sticking point for the board, you know, that they've been trying to get some, some movement here, but there hasn't been any movement. Um, so looking to you, board member Olivo, to just kind of share like, you know, what do you see success as?
Thank you so much, um, Mr. Williams. So, um, I wasn't able to attend that meeting. As, as many of you know, um, I was testifying on behalf of the board at the, um, delegation meeting. But I do know and board member Boozer Strutter, um, from conversations that I've had, I've had with her and with the, with, you know, fellow board members, um, has continuously raised the fact that, um, the, you know, this policy, our school-based management teams are not being implemented with fidelity, um, across all schools. And that is something that, um, she has continued to raise. And I think, you know, I guess, success would be that this is happening, you know, across our schools, certainly at a higher percentage than, um, than what we're currently seeing right now. Um, I don't know if that's not a hugely specific answer. I don't know if you're looking for more, um, or not.
No, that's helpful. And I think. No, that's helpful. And I think also, you know, tied to that, like, in that vision, like, how does P C A C support that? How does P C A C advise?
Yeah, yeah.
Help us get through success, yeah.
Yeah, so that's a great point. So I think probably, you know, just in my personal opinion, um, you know, we are looking to you all because you have your fingers in lots of schools and are talking with lots of parents, you know, to understand, is this happening at their school? Are they seeing this happen? And, um, not that, you know, I don't want to, like, not the tattletale role, but where, what schools need to be improved. Some are doing this really well, um, but lots aren't. And, you know, of course, you, I talk about, you know, I'm a parent of a PG C P S graduate and a current tenth grader. Across, um, their time, I've been in, um, eight different schools with them. So those are eight schools that I have very intimate, personal experience with. And between you all, you have even more schools. So helping us kind of be the eyes and ears, helping support parents to be ready and willing to step up into these leadership roles, which certainly can sometimes be intimidating, um, because to really have this in place across, you know, two hundred schools, we have to have at least two hundred parent leaders who are ready to be part of this. Um, so I think with P C A C supporting that work, potentially, um, helping to train, helping to champion parents, you can stand up and be part of this. You're worthy. You have the, you know, your expertise as your children, and that's what we need. Um, you know, those sorts of things I could see being incredibly helpful.
And then final question, and then what happens if they don't? What does accountability look like?
Yeah, well, and I think that is where, um, from, from what I've heard from Pamela Boozer Strutter, who has kind of been raising this, and she hasn't seen that level account of accountability. And so, you know, there were earlier conversations about how will the board evaluate themselves? Well, let's just say that seeing, you know, implementation of this polit, like, real implementation of this policy, if that's something that, for example, we put on our board evaluation and/or the superintendent's evaluation, then we would put in their metrics that we're seeing an X percentage improvement every year. Um, and so I think, you know, that could be a good way. Um, and if, if this is something that P C A C is really pushing, like, board, we want you to evaluate yourselves on the success of this, you know, many things, but this particular, um, policy and piece of it is one thing that we want to see that can help hold us accountable as well.
Awesome. I appreciate that. Yeah, just, um, understanding landscape, where we are, and then what success looks like. And ultimately, like, how we, how we get there, because that's the, the resource we don't have enough of is time. So the quicker we can get to the solutions and things of that nature, the, the, the better. So thank you so much for that.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Welsh was next, and then Vice Chair Smith.
I just, I just wanted to say, let everyone know that the, um, thirty, uh, thirty-four fifteen on the school-based management team is on the work plan for the Policy and Governance Committee for this school year. So they will be coming back and addressing that, uh, policy. Um, and, um, it will be an opportunity also then for P C A C to provide comment and stuff as they go through the process of looking at making changes and revisions to the policy.
Thank you, Ms. Welsh. And, and I, I just want to state very quickly, so we have a clear understanding what policy thirty-four fifteen school-based management team is. It's, is it's integral to the school improvement process, is a school-based decision-making. This is to be accomplished at each school by a school-based management team. That school-based management team includes various representatives, whether it's the P C A president or parent advisory group, as well as the Facility Advisory Council. You have, um, the Local Union twenty-two fifty, um, C E double, C E W Local four hundred P G. And in high schools, the Student Government Association for S A G. So, um, and this has not been updated since January fourteenth, two thousand and five. Um, and so it, it, it's not just about, um, getting parent groups. It really more so was about the leadership at the school, bringing the people together and meeting with them as they should with the information. So to me, this policy definitely, there has to be an A P, I'm assuming, associated with it because the governance piece falls under the superintendent. So, is there an A P, Doc, Ms. Welsh? Do you know, because I don't see it, anything referenced at the bottom of the policy.
That, I'm going to look. I will check.
Yeah, I didn't see anything. So, so that's the other piece, because usually a policy has a, um, a, um, an, uh, administrative procedure that's aligned with it. And so, when we talk about accountability, in order for there to be some accountability, there needs to be an A P that kind of lines, you know, outlines what's supposed to be happening, um, in the schoolhouse. Because no other group can kind of really control this, because these are things that are happening with individuals that are under that schoolhouse. Um, so, Ms. Vice Chair Smith?
Thanks for laying that foundation, um, Chair Milhouse, because I was over here looking at thirty-two, four, fourteen, I mean, thirty-four fifteen myself. Um, I think the only comment that I, I will put on the floor right now is how does the board representatives for each district tie in here? How they're, how, how are they connecting with these community or the school-based community leaders? Um, and, and this is not for, I'm not looking for a response, but just for something for us to think about.
Can, can you state that one more time?
Yeah, I try my best. How is our, how are the district board members connecting with the school-based leaders? Uh, yeah, I guess I'll just say it like that. That's, I think that's very straightforward in connection to this, this policy. Because if, you know, we're talking about advisement, I think we, there needs to be a plug with the board representative as well. You know, for all the schools that they, um, you know, that they, that falls within their district.
Okay, thank you for that. And so I want to go to Dr. Jackson, and then I'll come back to you, Ms. Welsh.
So I, I just want to share a little history. Back in two thousand and five, our district was heavily involved in the Comer process, and we were actively training schools on how to have school-based management teams. I've been here, guys, through, what, this is my fourteenth superintendent? And every superintendent does a little, some, something a little different. Uh, so we stopped doing that work. So even though we have this as a, in a policy and administrative procedure, there has been no training, uh, that's been offered. Um, we're looking, uh, Dr. Joseph is really looking at it, because we do have to hold people accountable for this. Uh, but if we're not training people, if we're not talking about the importance of doing this kind of work, it doesn't happen. So some schools do, uh, Ms. Aliva, uh, you're absolutely correct. There are some schools that not only learned it back then, but have kept the culture in place where they do this work, where they have structured teams that engage families, have families as part of the decision-making, shared decision-making process. Uh, and there are people who evaluate principals on that, because that's a big part of school culture. Um, how can you have an effective culture that has families engaged if you don't engage them? Or let them, you know, be a part of the conversation? So I think, you know, it's going to be a wonderful opportunity, uh, Doctor, under Dr. Joseph's leadership, working with this Board of Education to see how can we make sure that we renew that focus? That, you know, and the training and the accountability measures that schools need to have in place to make this happen. Uh, but I can tell you, I go in many schools. I visit schools all the time, and it is not happening. And I will talk to people about, so what parents are engaged in your shared decision-making? And they look at me like I'm speaking a foreign language. What is shared decision-making? And I'm thinking, oh, my gosh, how far we've fallen. Um, so, yeah, it is something that really needs attention, and hopefully updating the policy and administrative procedure can get us back on track with that. And I apologize for being a dinosaur, but yes, I do have history, so.
Thank you very much, um, Ms. Welsh. And then Ms. Welsh.
I, I just wanted to say, can you ask the question about administrative procedure? There is an administrative procedure. Um, it's fairly old. It was back, uh, done in back in two thousand and thirteen. Um, and to, um, Dr. Jackson's point, um, actually, we had discussed that, a policy the previous year and, but we didn't move forward, so that's why it's on the work plan for this year. But one of the things I was planning to do, because there absolutely are some schools that have very functional school-based management teams. And I had put the message out to all the associate superintendents, and at that time, uh, the person, uh, Dr. Davis, who was the chief of, uh, a school support, to ask them to identify a couple of their schools that had very high-functioning school-based management teams, because I thought it was important for them to come to the policy meeting to sort of talk about how does it work? What do they do? Who do they include? Those types of things. Uh, of course, that, that didn't end up happening last year. So my goal this year is to also do that, because I think it's important to, to, to go back to what Dr. Jackson said, uh, because it is sort of like from, from previous, uh, how things were operating. But for those schools that held on to it, there's some that, uh, my understanding is do a very good job with it. And so it's important, I think, to hear from them. So, uh, when they, this policy comes up in policy and governance, that they, um, my goal was to have a couple of the people representing the, like, we, actually, probably the principal, come to talk from their schools to get some idea of what's happening at the school level.
And so was policy thirty-four fifteen in place because it was alignment, in alignment with the law? That was a requirement at that time? Because, because I don't see that referenced either, because that would be, um, a, a telltale if it needs, do we need to look at, you know, any changes in the regulation? Um, one, uh, because we can sit here and look at it. I mean, it's, you know, it's a couple of lines. Um, but is there any Comer regulation that we need to look into? Um, not Comer, but Comer regulation. And based on what you said, Dr. Jackson, let's even go back to the fact of the cuts that are happening to your department and how this fell under your department. The reality is, we're talking about pushing, um, more engagement practices forward, right? What does that look like if you, if your budget keeps getting cut? So if, if we're saying that we need to improve in an area that we believe that will give us one of the biggest bangs for our buck, right? That, that engagement piece, then, uh, you know, when we're talking about these dollars and decisions, we really need to look at where we're making the cuts. And is it going to lead us to the impact that we're looking for? To make sure that all the stakeholders have what they need to actually manage and put in place a school-based management team. They have the things in place, so when you're evaluating them, they know what it should look like, and how do you measure that from a success standpoint? Um, and then, you know, what do we need to do to identify how to make sure that it stays something that's sustainable with the cuts that are going to continue coming year after year? So, um, I think, Ms. Welsh, your hand, I don't know if it.
Oh, I, I want to take that hand down, but, but I will say this. I'm going to do some research, legal research to see if I see anything. Because I know it's not, there's no, uh, legal citation in the policy, but I, I will do some research to see what I can find in that area.
Okay, and Dr. Jackson, are you still?
I, I did. I, I was just going to say, you're, you're right. There was no law attached to it, but it was, um, culture and, um, the, the framework of how do we improve the culture in Prince George's County Public Schools? So it wasn't about a, uh, uh, a law, but it was about, uh, learning about research and structures that need to happen in schools. So we, we use Dr. Comer's work, we use Joyce Epstein's work, uh, we used, and I'm, I'm looking at the lady right now, and I can't think of her face, but I mean, her name. Thank you, Karen Mapp, uh, who talked about how do you improve your work in schools? And school improvement is about opening the doors and listening to all of your stakeholders. And so the school system adopted those practices and put those into policy and into administrative procedures. Um, and what I've learned over time is just every superintendent is different. Every superintendent has a different focus. But if our committee raises that, that's important, to see a resurgence in that work. Um, and, and I'm thinking of, uh, uh, Robin, you can probably remember, um, Charlotte, was it Charlotte Danielson's? That we use to evaluate people, has that in the evaluation process? So, you know, it's how far have we strayed from what were found to be good practices that were helping the school system become better? Um, those are the conversations we probably need to have, you know, with our superintendent and our board members. How do we get people focused on those structures that help us improve collaboratively? Because we kind of have strayed away from it. We've returned to some silos, you know, and closed doors and, and haven't been working in partnership.
Okay, okay. Thank, thank you for that, um, Dr. Jackson. So, Mr. Williams, you, you put your hand down, or did, was it?
I wanted to give the floor to other folks, so please, please, Ms. Perkins, go right ahead.
Okay, Ms. Perkins, thank you.
I'll be brief. Um, I just wanted to, so when we talk about partnership, um, amongst P C A C and the Board of Ed, um, I think Ms. Welsh rep, um, mentioned that there were some current existing school-based management, um, schools out there that are thriving, right? Um, one of the beauties of us being P C A C reps is that each district is represented on this screen and community. It would be nice to have that list of those that are existence, because from twenty, you know, two thousand and five to twenty twenty-five, that's a long time. Schools may be doing it, but in a different capacity and renamed under other bands, you know, entities within the schools. So as you guys are working from a higher level, I think one of the added values that we have is we're on the boots and the grounds as P C A C, and it would be nice to know where, what that list looks like that you currently have. And then within our districts, we can take a look and see what P T A's, P T S Os are currently active and what that schoolhouse representation of the twenty twenty-five version of a school-based management team looks like, so that we can help reframe. Maybe it's just, you know, making the connection between the titles and, and the support factors. So that's what an ask that I would like for, um, us to propose to that we take action on.
Thank you for that. Um, Mr. Williams, did you want to, um, circle back and add anything?
Similarly, just, uh, what, what do we think our role is in this, in terms of like recommendations? I think we've identified what the, what the challenge is. I think that, um, we're in a fortunate situation where, uh, you know, our superintendent has kind of given us the charge of like, these are the two, we know what the two big rocks are right now. And I think if we know those things, and again, like, how, what's our recommendation, how we were able to move those things forward? I think that's also connected to, um, as we recognize there are, you know, dollars and decisions that need to be made. But I'm also of the belief that this was something that was identified as a big rock, that there will be dollars to support this, you know, moving forward as it's been, to some extent, identified as a priority, right? So kind of like how we're able to support that priority to show our value add and, um, you know, be in alignment and lockstep.
And so based on, um, your question, I, I think the first thing is to know, like, Ms. Welsh, is this, um, one of the policies that is actually being discussed?
Not, not right this minute, but it will be this year. It's on the list for policies that will be addressed throughout the school year. I don't have a date as to when they're going to begin looking at it at this point, but, but, um, I know it won't be done in December, but it'll be sometime, uh, starting in the first part of the calendar year, that they'll be addressing it.
Okay, and do we know what, um, are some of the, um, questions, comments or concerns that have been brought up as it relates to, um, what that is actually? You know, how will they want to approach kind of working to change it? Like, what gaps are they trying to fill with it?
But since we haven't, the committee hasn't had a discussion on it yet, I can't really. But since we haven't, the committee hasn't had a discussion on it yet, I can't really answer that question. It'll be, you know, once they discuss it. Now, I can go back to last year's meeting when they had began the discussion to listen to. And now that's many different committee members than what there were this year. But to hear what they had to say, which I would do anyway, as we get come up to that policy. But right this moment, off the top of my head, I can't really recall what they might have said. But our current committee has not had the opportunity yet to even talk about that policy.
So is there any way, when you all do talk about it, will you be bringing forward the information that was discussed in the with the previous committees?
I usually like to give a little bit of background. So yes, I will definitely be sharing what they might have, what was said at the previous committee meeting the year before.
And so to me, that's one of the approaches that we would need to start to see what they have been already discussing, because we can go and start to look at this policy. You know, but it it's not much that's here. And so it would be helpful if we can get some of the background information as it relates to what their approach was, you know, whether they start and stop with it. You know, but as I as I'm looking at the policy, I'm also looking at forty-two seventeen as the A P. And some of the things that's related in administrative procedure forty-two seventeen, talk about these school-based committees that should be in place. And so, Mr. Williams, from where I'm sitting, I would need a little bit more information to kind of understand what the board has already begun to work on, why this was paused, because it is a is a very shallow write-up of what should be happening and doesn't have much depth to it at all. And so, you know, I'm opening up the floor if someone has any other suggestions. And and I don't think, I mean, Ms. Welsh, this was last school year that this was discussed? Or was it the previous school year? Because I'm quite sure that maybe the board office could support us in pulling some of that information together that they should have, correct?
I can work with Cindy Adeline to to go back through the records to see what we can find.
Because that's what you all will be doing anyway, will be going.
Yeah.
Right. And so that way, we are, you know, in lockstep with the board in reviewing that information and and not moving outside of it from a perspective where we don't have any background information. And I would only ask that once we get that information and kind of establish a timeline that we all begin to review it and, you know, you know, provide the feedback that needs to be provided. And Dr. Jackson, I would love for Ms. Shannon to come and engage with us. And she's doing a lot of work with the schools and helping support the the parent groups that are trying to get started, whether it's a P T A, P T O, or parent advisory group, because that is a big component of this, since that seems to be a gap in a lot of schools, that there is no parent group that may be present. So even if there's an absence of a parent group, there is still a vocal parent that could be added on here, because the way it's written, it it seems to be pulling from a parent advisory group or the P T A president, as if there has to be an established group. So that that's my opinion. I open the floor up. Any other thoughts? On how we can approach it? Because I I do think that we're in a position to probably, you know, give some feedback to kind of help catapult them into their discussion. But I would like to know, since the board has already, with previous administrations, began discussing thirty-four fifteen, that that gives them some background on where we go from here.
Okay.
Ms. Alivo, you're the vice chair of the Policy and Governance. Do you have any feedback on what you would like to see in support of this?
I will admit, I have not started to think about this policy yet. I know it's on our work plan. It's just not something I have been able to focus on. However, like you, I am now very interested to understand what the Policy and Governance Committee had discussed previously. So I'm hoping that there are some some good minutes there that we can take a look at. And I certainly would welcome P C A C's, you know, input, even, you know, as we as we just as we look to start reviewing this policy in two thousand twenty-six, I would love to have P C A C's thoughts on that for our committee discussion.
Okay. And and Dr. Jackson, what would also be helpful is if you could, you know, follow up with Superintendent Joseph to kind of ask, you know, what his vision may be as it relates to thirty-four fifteen. I know he spoke about the, you know, having, let me go back to my notes, having more meaningful communication and conversation with those groups. But I think that will also help us get an idea of what it is he's looking for and what he wants, that we're just not all hodgepodge coming from our own perspective, but that we are advising based on what the superintendent is looking for as it relates to support and guidance, as well as the board.
Got it.
Would would that be helpful? So we can begin to move forward, everyone, to review the information and, you know, provide some feedback.
That's, that would be great. Yeah.
I mean, not that anyone else has to respond, but it would be helpful to kind of have a robust discussion.
So as asking this, because I know there was a request around, like, you know, identifying the schools in which it's working. I don't know if two things can be true here to where, within our respective districts that we represent, like, we're doing some of that polling ourselves. Because I do think, like, you know, like, we can walk and chew gum at the same time, you know, in terms of like, being able to to do some of that, to then bring it back to of, once we like, know where the previous minutes were and where the conversations were left off, because that could be just some good, like, data analysis in itself, to just know where we are.
And and so to make sure that I am clear on it, you're you're saying us as individuals to go to the prospective schools to, you know, ask those questions? What what helped me understand?
Whatever our sphere of influence is, we all represent districts on here. So that means we have touch points at respective schools, or me as a community leader have, you know, multiple touch points at multiple schools. So like, you know, making that an ask to go back to those respective places we represent and just get an idea of, you know, what's happening at Sootland High School? You know what I mean? Like, I know, I know, you know, currently what they're doing, but, you know, meeting with principal, right? Because I have access to that to say, hey, like, how is this showing up for you right now? And that I could bring it back to this group to share, you know, they're they're doing A B C X Y Z, or actually, there's nothing there, you know? So we have an idea of, you know, a starting point of just some places around the county, since we represent, you know, that's a swath of the county. And sorry if I'm not articulating that that clearly, but, yeah, just trying to see, like, again, what where is that in-between of some takeaways we can have for some some other actions that could be taking place? Or, you know, or I'm offering that I will do that in between now and our next meeting to get an idea of what that looks like in some of the the schools that I work with.
Ms. 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 Perkins?
I was just gonna say, it's kind of like to echo what James was saying, but maybe it's something even simpler that we, as P C A C members, touch bases with our board members, because they have that pulse already. And because I see a lot of them doing the community chats and stuff already. So I'm I'm assuming there's a level of understanding and engagement when it comes to their schools. So I think that would be probably the easiest of them. Like you said, James, maybe we can fill in the blanks for the information of the schools that they don't know. But I would actually ask that we start with our board members and have them to tell us, and then we can kind of fill in.
Why would you let me ramble that long, Ms. Perkins, when you could have just jumped in, you know?
I'm not rude.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Ms. Smith, and then Ms. Lawrence.
I actually think that Ms. Perkins just spoke on what I was about to bring up. I think P C A C's role could be helping with the analysis of the information. But obtaining the information, I think it's best that we work through our board member or another means. I I don't think that we should should. Responsibility is not the word I'm looking for, but I don't think we should be responsible for trying to collect the data.
Thank you, Vice Chair, Ms. Lawrence.
I was just obviously gonna echo all of that, again, just to say to work with the board members. But then I'm also wondering, you know, I'm about actionable next steps. So then once we get this information, then what? What's the plan?
What which information?
When we, so if we connect with our board members and they say, you know, these schools have this, this, these great leadership groups, these schools don't. So then what are we now doing with now we know, which I feel like we already kind of know? Well, you know, the leadership knows. So then are we saying? Is this just to help identify that, like, what, I guess, like, what is the the ultimate goal here? And I guess that then goes back to Chair Milhouse, you saying, we need the vision. I think we're kind of, we need, like, you know, the cart before the horse or whatever. We need the vision, Dr. Joseph's vision. And then also to see, like, the historical context, like you said, is gonna be helpful. And then to, like, come up with, if we decide to work with our board members to get this information and analyze it, then what is the next step? That's where I'm kind of lost.
I would just say, so from my point of view, I'm an analyst at heart. So this might come out wrong, but we use the board members for the information that they have. We can create one document that we can have as reference for us. And we we put that information in there, so that when we're having these conversations, we, as P C A C, have a source document of tangible information. So out of the twenty-two schools in District Nine, sixteen of them have active P T As. You know, four of them are working on it. We have that tangible information, so that when Robin, Dr. Jackson, when they come back with this, you know, committee-type information, we have boots-on-the-ground data to support it. I think that's what I'm looking for when we're talking about how to analyze, how to support. We have to know where we are currently at. I think that we can do that by the January meeting or February. Well, we can do February, because it's not even slated for them to discuss. So I would like to bring that to a motion.
Oh, okay. So before we bring that to a motion, I I need to make sure that there I I clarify a couple of things. Because I heard several things about us going out, identifying what schools may have, and talking to schools to see if, you know, the school-based management teams are in place. Administration, they they have meetings with their principals every month, right? And so, Dr. Jackson, you know, thi- this should be an easy survey that the school system could send out to all of their schools to say, hey, who has a school-based management team in place? And, you know, so I want to make sure that our role in advising is not to see who has something in place. But it's more so to really identify what is this policy saying needs to be done? What is being governed under this policy? And 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 what purpose is it filling to meet the needs of the overall goal is to get our kids from eight to twelve, right? So I want to make sure that we are not kind of creating, you know, things for us to do and identifying who has school-based management teams, but more so, the administration should be doing that. We need to have a better understanding of why is this policy sitting here? Why why did they stop moving forward with it? What's happening? And why do we need it in place to make sure that there is a team in place at each school that is involved in the discussions and conversations where all stakeholders are being heard? And so, as I listened to what everybody was saying, I just want to make sure that we are not going off and kind of creating things for us to do, because there is a school system that's in place, that they have departments and people are getting paid to do several different things. And so they should be able to kind of send out and know, you know, what access they they have by reaching out to the principals to ask the simple question. For us, it really is about this policy and how do we support making the policy more robust to support the work that the superintendent was talking about and making sure that there are meaningful conversations with all stakeholders in the schoolhouse? Ms. Alivo?
Thanks so much. And I I want to, I I agree with everything that you said, Ms. Milhouse. And I want to circle back to Robin's comment. When she first brought this up, she had mentioned that she was planning to reach out to the associate superintendents to identify some schools that are doing this and are doing it well. I think that eventually, once we have our policy in place and and you feel really good about it and we feel really good about it, that would really be the time to go out and start polling maybe every school and seeing how we can help with this sort of training, with this parental engagement, with pushing the principals. But I wonder if, as an interim step right now, we kind of take a little bit of the suggestions that the members have mentioned, a little bit of what Robin had suggested and what you're saying, Ms. Milhouse, and we identify right now a handful of schools that are doing this and are doing it well, so that maybe we can we can talk with them, we can talk, maybe P C A C could talk with their parent member of the school management team and get some ideas from them to how to influence this policy, so that, you know, we're not just updating a policy from, you know, twenty years ago, but we're updating it with some lessons learned by these schools and by these parents and by these principals over the last twenty years, so that we what we put in place today, moving forward, also includes those, you know, best, current best practices, if you will. And I wonder if that's almost like a middle ground between all of these suggestions, as right now, our focus needs to be updating this policy and then starting to get it implemented with fidelity across the school system.
Right. And and so, you know, I think we're saying the same thing, that the starting point is, you know, where the school system is identifying on what's already in place and, you know, providing us with the information on what the past Policy and Governance Committee has already had a discussion about, so we can have a really good understanding of where they were going with it. And then adding on to talking to those individuals who are actually following the policy and it's working to see what's happening, get some of the best practices. And then we can kind of add into this policy, which is, you know, it's it's not a lot here. So it it's not like we have to go through a lot to kind of, oh, we need to read a lot. It, you know, I'm quite sure that once we know what's happening, because I can tell you at both of my children's schools, there is no school-based management team in place. And so I'm gonna put a pin in that. And then I know that a motion was put on the floor, Ms. Perkins, to. Can you state your motion again?
I will withdraw it for now, because I think that it's important for Ms. Welsh to provide the information, the background information first.
And so, Ms. Welsh, not not to pressure you and put a timeline on you, but, you know, the ball is really in your court, you and Dr. Jackson, actually, to kind of just get us some information. And and it doesn't stop us from having conversations, you know, with people in our respective areas right now. And so, Ms. Perkins, your hand is up.
It is again, question. So, Dr. Jackson, what would be a reasonable time period for that survey to go to the schools and then for us to get the feedback?
I would say at this point, it would probably have to happen in January, simply because right now, we got, what, three more weeks before winter break? And so the the survey would be, need to be developed, vetted by this group to make sure it's gonna ask the questions that we think would be meaningful and give us the information we want. And I know Dr. Schrader's team would probably. And I know Dr. Schrader's team uh would probably take till about the middle of January to get that out. So, but I'll I'll do the asking, Brina, right away, that explains to them what we want as far as the survey.
And and I and I want to say, um, before I say this, are there any other questions about thirty-four fifteen? Because I think right now what we are deciding on is Ms. Welsh will move forward um to pull the information from the previous um uh policy governance meetings and identify, you know, what schools um actually have um school-based management teams in place. And Dr. Jackson, you'll reach out to see if the um the chiefs, you know, have something that can go out, a survey or so, to the schools um to identify, you know, where you all are with the school-based management teams. And then you all would be able to get, I mean, the biggest information I think that we need quickly, well, as quick as possible, is past historical um meeting data regarding thirty-four fifteen. You know, even if it's just links to the meetings itself, um, or meeting minutes, that would definitely be helpful. And so, we we are not, right now, we are um in in a waiting period. But as you stated, there's nothing stopping anyone from talking to any people in the community, any schools, your board member um about what they know or don't know about the school-based management teams. Questions, comments? Okay, so before everyone kind of, you know, I lose everyone, let's just, um, I I do want to say about the budget piece. Um, since there's a lot of discussion, the um, the invitations went out. I I think that's a huge area where we can, um, you know, be prepared and make a big impact in the advisement component, um, because it it is moving rather rather quickly. It is a lot of information that you would have to synthesize. Um, and what would be helpful is to look at the information from the budget, the dollars and decisions. There's some um, the Q and A's that we had, the 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 town halls. They did the website, the Q and A's are up there. Um, so become very familiar with what's happening, how it's being communicated and how the school system could be in a better position to make sure that all stakeholders have a clear understanding of um the process, um, the impact of decisions that are being made, how it aligns with the state plan. And, yeah, to be ready for the meetings that I'm hoping that you all sign up for. And and that's a big part of how um we participate, advise and support the work that needs to happen and also push for accountability. Um, are there any questions about that portion? Um, because I know that wasn't a big topic of discussion um at the meeting on Monday. But that equal partnership, the advocacy work, the equity, um to be invited to have your voices be um at the part of the beginning of the discussion instead of afterwards is very important. So I'm hoping that you all are able to show up, but you need to be versed and ready to ask key questions um to dig a little deeper into what's happening with the budget. Rashir Smith?
I'm gonna try to be concise um with the question that I had, which I believe is if we need access to data or information in order to prepare for these discussions, how can we obtain it? The reason why I am asking um is because, one, I like to be guarded with information. Uh, and I like to, you know, if I'm going to provide any type of feedback, I'm a Y person, I'm a Q and A person. Um, so I like to look at information. When I look at, um, like the legislative priorities for special education right now, a lot of things are surrounded around funding. Um, and the first thing that comes to my mind is, okay, well, what are we doing with the current funding and how effective is the current funding? So I say all that to say, is there access to information in order for us to prepare for these discussions?
So I would say yes, and that's why we have the board liaison and the superintendent liaison. And so what we will just do is we will send the requests to the board liaison and superintendent liaison to PCAT. And they will move forward to get us the information. And if they can't, hopefully they come back and tell us that.
And um Chair Milhouse, that's why I raised my hand. You've said it. Uh, there are opportunities and resources available to just ask those questions of. So, yes. I know the last board meeting, um, the budget office did a huge presentation on where we are financially, why we're there, and what some of the, um, what you call initial plans are. So and so that's recorded. We can go to the board's site to listen to that presentation. And they also uh uploaded their presentation that had the numbers in it. And you know, where where the cuts had to happen already and where some of them might have to happen again. So that information is available.
And and for those of you who may not have the time, you can always use the AI2 Notebook LM. And you can drop it in that and it will give you a quick podcast. Okay? Any other questions, comments?
Chair Milhouse, I just wanted to quickly go back to, and not to belabor this, but go back to policy thirty-four fifteen. I know Ms. Welsh is going to provide uh background information and also identify schools uh with school-based management teams. Um, and then Dr. Dr. Jackson is going to ask for a survey to go out to schools. And the purpose of that survey is to what?
Well, I had mentioned the survey as a way to connect with the schools rather quickly to get information that the school may be looking for, like who has this, um, the the committees in place now. Um, and so, again, it was just a suggestion, like that has to be a decision on how the school system is deciding to reach out to determine, you know, where these management teams are per school and how effective they are. And so I'm I'm not really telling them to do that. That was just a suggestion to quickly gather information about how many schools actually have the team whatever other questions they may be looking for um to get a better understanding of how they need to improve on the policy or not.
Right, that makes sense. I just was wondering if 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 Ms. Welch is already identifying those schools, then is that isn't, is that together with the survey? Am I confusing it?
No, you're not. It it's really more, you know, I I'm not telling anyone what to do and how to do it. I'm just, Dr. Jackson and and Ms. Welsh can can go back as the superintendent um designees on this committee to to work with the superintendent to determine what's the best way um to gather the information. To me, the biggest bang for our buck is to understand what the Policy and Governance Committee has met about in the past in relation to this. Um, because in all honesty, you know, knowing what schools have it and who does not, you know, it is not really for me. It 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 doesn't add any weight to the conversation for me. I I would like to see what discussions were had under policy and governance. Um, and and then to see, you know, what kind of sparked that conversation, where they were and why it was kind of put on the back.
Right. Okay, thank you.
But but that's just a question that I had asked. And so I'm, as the designate means, that they should move forward to, you know, know the best way how to engage with, um, yeah, the the administration. And um Amy's here, so she can, you know, um, hopefully engage with the Policy and Governance Committee and then circle back with us with any other information. But um the suggestion was also that individuals, if you would like, still go and touch bases. So while we're waiting for this information, we can talk to schools and points of contact that we have to say, hey, do you have a school-based management team and how's it working? You know, and if not, you know, what are some of the hurdles that you have? There's nothing stopping anyone from doing that, but I am not moving to vote that we are saying it is the director's voice to go out and do that. Does that clarify?
Yes, that helps. Thank you.
You're welcome.
At least for me.
Any other questions? And so I I do want to say that, um, in in walking away from that meeting, one of the things that I would like us to um really move forward with is when they spoke about how do we support the board um in connecting with the community and providing a space for parents to share concerns and receive updates. If if there is anything that anyone would like to add to it, what I will do, I want to talk to um Teresa and Ms. Lawrence in our next meeting. And we can send um an a survey out to the group and the committee as a whole and and begin to gather information where we may be able to identify ways that they can improve in connecting with the community. Improve on um um how parents receive updates and then how they respond to those updates in a responsive manner. Um, but the first place that we would definitely need to start with is talking to the board members because it seemed to come from a place of concern. And, you know, the best thing to do is speak with the board members to really understand the individual concerns and what may be happening in each district. So, um, and 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 I want to say, the meeting that we had, it's not that we come and we're coming into this meeting, it's like, hey, we have all these ideas, this is what we're going to advise them on. It was a very brief meeting, um, the first of many. One of the main takeaways was how do we continue to engage going forward? Do we have um the virtual meeting? Do we do we meet again? And the concern was, it's not really feasible to come and have a thirty-minute meeting um in person. And and then to also make sure that we're not having a closed session meeting because the public has the right to access and to be a part of the discussion. Um, since we are representing um the parent and community voice. So, any questions, comments, or concerns? No, and and I just want to also say, the meeting was Monday. It wasn't like we had much time to kind of turn around to discuss what do we do after that meeting with the information. So we're having the time here. So please, if anyone has anything to add, please do so, because we are about to move into adjournment of meeting.
I would just want to lift that, um, and apologies for not raising my hand. I'm trying to learn to take notes and talk. I forget that I'm supposed to be taking notes. Um, but, um, accessibility of the meetings, so five o'clock on a Monday or five o'clock on any day, um, is tough. So would just want to lift, and I know, you know, board members and the superintendent, we all have uh jobs or other things to do. But, um, I think that it's important to think about, um, those types of things when planning the meetings. Um, five o'clock is just not an ideal time. I know there's not going to be one time that works for everyone. Um, but five o'clock especially is tough and difficult um for folks. So just wanted to lift that.
Uh, and thank you for that. We, you know, I did mention that at the meeting and um in full transparency in the um communication that we had um with the board, um, the request was made that they attend um our meeting. And um at the time, there seemed to be some misunderstanding of what that would look like or if that was even um a an allowable action under OMA. But after um a very brief, robust discussion, um, it was determined that they can attend our meeting. And so, um, in order to be able to hear from all the voices, um, that we are hoping that they will join um our meeting. Next quarterly meeting is virtually with us. That is the hope. So we will see, we don't know. Um, but, um, there was an open agreement that, yes, they will look into participating in the virtual meeting. So, any other questions, comments? Okay, at this time, it is eight forty-six. We will move into adjournment of the meeting. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn our December third meeting at eight forty-six P M.
I second.
Okay, all in favor? Yay.
There is Ms. Walker.
Happy holidays. And so at this time, we will be adjourning the meeting.
Thank you.
Happy holidays. Good night.